We're going to be at City Hall. They're being questioned.
Sorry.
Two Texas government, oh Texas five five one seven. One more member of the town council may attend and participate in a video conference. The form of the town council is completely credible. It's letting you indication. The following handles in this case. First of all, I want to say, hope y'all had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Meaning all the words. It's alright. What is this? Equal present. Good Lord. We thank for this opportunity to serve our community. We thank for a new year, new beginning. Watch over this town. How grateful for all the blessings that are upon us. That's where we're aware of your God. Best you take your hand on the protection. But the note says, the task to serve this community data. They're very, very modern. Charles. Like the weather. You know, it's a. It's. It's. So.
Councilmember. Councilwoman. Councilwoman.
Here.
Councilwoman. The world.
Here.
Councilmember. Dave Bell.
Here.
Mayor Carter.
Here. I'm making love to this. Miss Colin. Both of them by the mayor and they're gonna. And the dollar. Do excuse me. Yes.
Councilmember. Councilmember.
Yeah.
Councilmember. Dave Bell. Yes. Mayor Carter.
Yes. The form. Which is the best account on topics. Will we go through our formal action taken during this and I. Speaking of identifying themselves for speaking. If you could request one mention presented to the city secretary of private need. Ready?
I mean that.
Very good. Hey, new business discussion configuration of possible act. I'll teach the following items. Orders were high. Desiree. To murder his name. I saw that guy. Be there.
Good hour.
There we go. Thank you so much. Jerry has a district soccer game where she is the starting goalie.
Yeah.
So go P I. And can't be with us tonight. However, her father. Don't have any name here. I apologize.
It's T J, Mr. Reno.
T J.
Yes, sir.
Serena will be sitting on her behalf. I apologize.
No, it's okay.
Okay, on behalf of the council, I'm just gonna stand up. On. I just came off of the track and just tried to watch the play. For the girl soccer team. I've never had to really save already. Uh, but Desiree's all around at beach. She's one of her sophomore, uh, sophomore class. And um, during the fall season, she was, uh, involved in a situation where, uh, it involved her, um, having, you know, quick, quick thought to do the heimlich maneuver to save one of her peers, um, from choking. Was apparently choking. So she was able to do that and, and it lodged, dislodged the, um, the item from the throat. And you know, everything, uh, was good after that. You know, the, you know, they're very thankful for it. And she's been, uh, praised by the district and, and by the city of South Valley. So, um, we're on deck for that. We're really excited to present this to Desiree. And we would like to, uh, just right now for the, uh, in recognition of outstanding life-saving skills. We hereby honor Desiree, um, Renee Vavotti. Um, so, uh, awarding her with, with picking in actions that resulted in saving her life. So awarded today, the tenth day of January twenty twenty three. On my. Sure. Yeah. Uh. Oh. Are you? Oh. Right, right here, so.
Yeah. The way right.
Oh, okay. My house.
Thank you. Thank you. I've left y'all.
We can send you home. Well, I want to open it. Thank you, Ramar.
Thank you. Sitting out there. And this. Number two minutes consideration possible act to approve the following minutes. Number thirteen twenty twenty two regular town council meeting. Making a lot of real proof in evidence. December thirty. We're looking to approve the December thirteen twenty two minutes made by Commissioner Waral, second of Commissioner Howard.
Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember. Mayor Carter.
Yes. I have number three, final reports, review of one to bunch reports.
So you have a sound. They did it for, uh, you know, then we're going to be. Are the bounds for. Then next, you know, do you see one of those? Do you want to make questions about those? And then do you do the check register if you want us to come up with that by our expenses? And you'll have to. Ground out.
Good question. The time, give me about eight, as the December thirty first.
Yes.
The time to read itself. Remember.
We don't get the statements. We.
I understand that.
Well, we're just trying to give it as up to date as, as we have. So, um, if I did, I would be too much. I mean, you could do the, the balance to that, but November thirtieth, so that was aligned. Um, but, uh, I try to get it right. At current as we have it. Well, yeah, balance you could do up to the thirty first. You can only be banking that to the third month, the month prior. So, um. It would be neater, which would get all the same month, so. On the.
Only one.
Right. We.
The.
Members.
The, uh, the banks are written self, November. December thirty first, the voucher. I think they have come out on the first. So.
In the mail. So we could.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm not sure that, yeah. No, so women, like, because it's a local base. We were with law five buildings, the mayor said, so. We need it online and we are checking it out, you know, um, but the time down. We literally got. And on Friday when we were sending out that, oh, on my face.
I have four. Orders twenty twenty two. That is being important to better.
This, this, that, the second meeting of the ordinance, we could do what we need, uh, changes, uh, the first reading of the proof that it was. There were a couple of typo changes that we corrected and, um, the ones that you pointed out were corrected. So, uh, but they were substantive changes. So we're just asking for the. Again, just to summarize, it's adopting all the codes that we already, um, expect to do. It's nothing different than we do. It's just getting it right. So our books are in line with what we. It's adopting the current codes for all the doubt and also adding. We'll adopt current codes going forward. And that's the segment that our drinking program has left out. We adopted the current one, but didn't say going forward, we'll adapt the current one. So that sort of, um, sets up that point. Updates.
Uh, that's fair.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve one next twenty two thousand thirty eight. So it's exactly. Really close.
Okay, most new people, the meeting of the board, I'm trying to control. There's a town building codes made by. It was number number Howard, taken by not really four up. Uh, ordinance of twenty twenty two dash zero eight, ordinance of town council to come. These are the orders of these seventeen dash thirty one about various. And ordinance building provisions of parts of codes. And some building laws providing for capital violations, so it's a right location. Yes.
Solid.
Yes.
Councilmember. Waral. Councilmember. Dave Bell.
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes. I have the five. Written statement. Finally. The present law. To approve the ready. Finally. Now, we're going to be specifically specialized in the use for for the older. There's government, uh, who we choose once.
So this has to do with our line barter concept. It actually has this movie and, um, they're from line barter. So I'm going to hand over the points that they won't come to their. You guys, as I will, so, uh. May have the book. Okay, so this is actually a, um, that was not. Uh, any government is what I just. After our fourth. Is now required to, uh, post a question. Now, if we actually miss, how does it? Use two fold. Um, there being a, a notice requirement. Uh, alongside agenda, we provided that, uh, Donald, which is a whole that's up three alongside the agenda on the website and on the board. And basically, uh, notice outlines that the city of. Uh, is technically to enter into this. After, with the line barter. Um, and this specialized service is something that, uh, the major. That the notice requirement would be. Next, so that's what we. I'm in session to be able to enter into each conference. Second part of this session also read that there must be a certain sign that we need by, uh, council. Um, and that finding is that this specialized service that they recognize that. Right, crisis, probably any available turn cannot, uh, execute, so it has been, uh. Outside of the normal parameters of, of what the. Uh. Practice. Uh, this is something that also comes out, gets tuned by safety personnel and reasonable cause. Um, that, that the, uh, line barter phone is very qualified and competent. That we have, uh, several years of experience conducting, uh, this specialized service. And so that, that would find the, uh, is second part of this session at least. And so, um, that is why it is on the agenda the way it is. Because one of the findings done. gives the mayor the authority to sign off on the written notice at least.
Any question? Yeah. The.
Questions. The written statement and findings of the town, this does lead for specialized, the municipal court legal services pursuant to Mexico and the code twenty two forty four.
But. Most new people, the written statement and findings of the town, town, for the town's base, the specialized, the ancient municipal court legal service. Who takes the twenty two forty four. Councilmember Howard, second of the councilmember.
Member.
Yes.
Councilmember Howard.
Yeah.
Solid.
Yeah.
Councilmember. Waral.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dave Bell. Mayor Carter.
Yes. Thank you. Maybe as of the next. Alan. We both parts collecting from contract and duration of possible act to approve the order. Contact that these and find. Line barters, Roland Blair and.
So, um, again, I want to start to, to find a couple of this is, where it's led in work more when people don't see their. They get a very good. Uh, their work. Through all of this. Far better than if you just had. Um, but I will hand it over.
For the consequences of our, uh. Identical to the previous contact. Um, no change that you will see our. Um, specific during their contact. Um, we are, um. I think that we have done for the city of. We're well, have any questions?
Alan. I guess I have. All those pages updating. There we go. Rest in. I can only say that you guys are great. Enjoy the work you guys are, like, great. It's insanely good. And so I make a motion to, uh, approve. Or. Yes, this meaningful court collection of, of line barter, Roland Blair and himself. Second. Okay, so motion made by Mayor Carter, seconded by Councilmember.
Councilmember Ramara.
Yeah.
Councilmember Howard.
Yeah.
Councilmember. Councilmember. Mayor Carter.
Guys, you're.
Thank you all.
Number seven, big year of annual audit. Consideration possible act to approve the bigger of. Means can hold the. Five two hundred, the total of sports on three to fifteen, one twenty three percent. That's right.
So we're just, uh, just asking for the council to approach to say there is a hot place to put like for their. They tell here, um, the dance that they bring people in from Brownville, Ohio. Um, and you know, it just, it gets greater each year. And it's definitely that, being that you're, um, again, so I would just ask before, you know, the people.
Want them to approve, but I think.
Okay.
You who the big heroes, third annual five, three hundred, eighteen, fifteen, twenty three, the law's part of it, made by some council member. So I was thinking of that.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Howard. Councilmember. Solid.
Yes.
Councilmember. Waral. Councilmember.
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Inside one, bro. Item number eight, public range in presentation of community six twenty twenty three, part master.
So, um, I'm gonna, most of you already know Ms. Patty Alexander. She's been working on our apartment. And, uh, she's gonna give us a quick update as far as where she that and kind of present where she found him. I'm. So. Got my handy man.
Um, so let's see, I'm looking on. The town of Lubin, the park recreation and open. Uh, just to let you know, mass plans are good for ten years. However, wildlife wants to do it every five. So, um, think of this, the five. With a little. Um. Next. The purpose of this is by direction, clearly define the role of the town and provide parks and recreational facilities. And develop the strategy to improve our system over the next. Um. And. The town of Lubin Vista is committed to providing, um, you know, a diverse, high-quality acceptable. So, and let me tell you, I've gone through all of the. All of the park facilities. And, uh, really nice, you've got a great park system. So, you know, thank you for making my job. So, um. For the. What we're looking at is doing an inventory and assessment of the existing facilities. And that's why I've been sitting in all of your parks. Um, we're looking at the history and context of the community. So that we know, you know, really, why we're doing this, what the, what the community wants and where you're coming from. Uh, we're looking for public input. There are three, three, um, ways that we can look at, at the park map plan to develop your goals and priorities. And a big one is what do people want? And, um, that's really why I'm here tonight, to find out what, what you want. Um, and I'm. But, you know, if there's more, definitely. You know, if you've had a chance to mull things over and there's more than what I have. This is a great time to. Um, and then we'll be developing your goals, your priorities. Um, and that will put you in a position, uh, to ask, say, the Texas Texas Park Wildlife for grant. Could either build new parks or improve your old parks based on your priorities and your goals. So that's really what we're doing here tonight. So let me take you through what, what you've already got. And, uh. So of course, first one we got is the law park right out here. And it is a great park. When I met the department board, um, uh, there were some people, it was cold. It was, it was really a really cold night. Um. So, um, but there were still people playing basketball. Right here at the little park. So, um, that's been, and I, you know, I gave them survey and said, you know, let us know what you want. Uh, you've got some great facilities here. You've got trail, you've got this, um, trail, you've got playgrounds, uh, movies that are not specific. We can make it better, um, but what you've got right now. And then we got, so movies, the nature trail, walking trail. And that has been very popular with people that I've talked with. Um, now, when I went out to take pictures, I left a lot of blood, you know, a lot. Yeah. Um, to nature park. Um, but you've got some great. You know, you've got some great native habitat, great native vegetation in there, uh, great bird watching facilities. And, and it's just really wonderful. You do have a few non-natives, uh, and you've got some invasive species as well, but they're not bad. And this is the timeline to take care of that without too much trouble. Um, and then we have. The sports park. Um, you've got. Oodles and oodles of space. People to play soccer, baseball, diamond. Um, so it's really, it's a good park. So you've got a lot of diversity. So we've got the sea port park. Um, so you've got the deep water park. I agree, um, break my hands if I'm trying to be done, but there are. They deserve a place. There's more and more are. There's plenty more. Yeah.
Special.
You've got a beautiful. That's a beautiful bit. A lot of green spaces there. So, uh, you know, it serves as a beautiful memorial plus a nice. And then you have. Well. So you not only have, uh, sports parks and recreational parks, you've got. It's one areas as well, which is a great thing to have in the park. That the cultural, uh, uh, the cultural, cultural park as well. And then you've got, and I have. Um. The birds were. Are just saying, I'm. So that was great for me. Um, so you've got something that very few other folks have this access to many. Um, and it's not a problem. Some people ask me, is it a problem that it's only for our residents? And it's not a problem that it's only for your residents. There's also. So. You know, and you make it a name for the existence. Um, so yeah. Probably has no problems with that. Um, and then we've got the, the library. Since this is also an open space, but I should have as well, so it's right in my heart. Uh, and what is that? Open space or, you know, something in the future. You've got that. Now, what's, what's great, what things are great about this? One, you've got a bicycle station right there. A bicycle, air safety station. So people that are biking through here. Um, if, if they have that, well. They can go like that. You also have other alternative transportation. So you've got bound that robust that stops right there. Uh, so everybody can visit. Um. And then we've got. Uh, other facilities nearby. You've got adult force, you've got self-defense. Um, so you've got a lot of richness. In the park. Uh, I know that there can be more. And, uh, that's really what we're here to, to talk about today. So. And then, so just to kind of sum it up. Parks should improve the health of the people. They should participate in development. Uh, they should offer a place to express, uh, pressure. And, um, because we've got so many more demands on our parks, but we still have limited funding. We have to make this right. We like that. People do now. Like in addition to the conversation you have with people or. I just don't know if you talked about, you know, why, or if it was when you just started, it was already about it. I think our town is in dire need of water. Um. The other part there at the library, but if you walk along. Cause you're not, you're trying to put you, it's something. Yeah. Now that trash cans and restaurants are always very high priorities. And for. Anybody that. On the commission. Got one line and filled out one, um, of. Um. You have. So this was, this was our most survey. Um. Don't. Yeah. So there's a lot. Um, and a lot. Yeah, I saw. Um, and a lot of, yeah, I saw that. Because if it's in the Park Master Plan, it's. Want to put it in a park, right? Uh, so we've got the line. Not all of them will be forward. Um, but, uh, but they mentioned some. Um, the sports. Even if it's wrong in my memory, but it's on the land that you know.
The county. Right. I'm trying to, uh, you know, they still have a parcel, uh, developed now. So I'm trying to figure out, uh, if they're, if I'm kind of getting the, oh, you talked. But, um.
What I. Is that they were. Okay, that's, that was. And so that, and that they, when, when they were going to redo their, their area, they were going to develop their own. Play here.
Okay.
And so that.
Okay. Well, so I'm trying to get a, you know, purchase power, can be buy it, can be, you know, what is the option for, you know? Um, I put acquiring that, which I already have it, um, you know, we're kind of using it already and there's not much of that. But it's nice and trying to get the status of what they were supposed to. I, I didn't know about that part, but I knew the part where they were going to rebuild another set of apartments, which everybody over and then, you know, do that, do the shuffle. But I can't, I can't seem to get anybody to commit to anything. So I've gotten a couple of good leads, but I'm going to continue trying to see if I can answer. Because, you know, I was wanting to see if I could get sort of a credit first refusal. They're going to sell it, you know, like what can we buy it? You know, with the county in theory, they, I mean, they didn't even come to us. We got plans from the Dollar General. They're like, it's, it's in a real estate contract. Oh, okay. It's a wonderful part.
Yeah. So the difference was history. I mean, like, well, when I, almost twelve years ago, I ran because of roll out park. And we created that my first year I was on the board. And, um, it is, you know, to me, it's the jewel of the lower looking of my career. Of course, I think that, but, uh, but, you know, it, it needs some. Contend a little here, right? And with, when we did that, we also did the walk-in park and we moved everything from roll out park. To the sports park. And so those little tubes, like, and all of our kids grew up on, in those tubes. I mean, that was just like, it's kind of a funny little thing. You go to the academy that they say that. But, um, I, I just think, I thank you guys for getting together, make this master plan so we can hopefully move forward. And, and create a better environment for it. So it's, I'm looking forward to it. But I wouldn't put the, the sports part in consideration at all.
So we can view kind of what if, right? That's when we can have kind of two plans, you know, what, the what if, let's be honest about that. If we were to, because it's like you said, if we don't put it in there, then we can't do it at all. So we, we throw it in there. So if on the some chance we end up getting it, you know, in the next two or three years for some, you know, change of event. We're not, um, out of luck for our nonprofit fundee, which is how we want to get free moves. So it's kind of one of those, it's just, um. Out of precaution, you know, if by some chance we're able to, to market it, then it's in there, it's mentioned, you've got an honorable mention that we need. So then it is applicable to think, you know, a project that we.
In terms of. Do we have it already, uh, in policy or is it something that's going to be connected with, what if I'm. The native plant species or flora? Uh, what was that? Is it quantified? I know it's saying open source, maybe there's so much of a percent. But does that also come to some sort of more tangible? Type of.
Um, yeah, it's entirely up to all of you, you know, the city. Um, it's your. You decide what you want in it, what you want as priority, what you want as goal. Um, I will tell you that I formerly worked for the animal protection wildlife group. So, you know, I, I am, I am a little attached. To, um, native plants myself, but, um. If it's entirely up to all of you, it's up to the city to decide. Uh, you know, how are we going to address landscaping? Now, that can be one of your goals is to use, um, you know, to, to use native plants. Um, make sure that any new landscaping is at least, you know, fifty percent or whatever percent native landscaping. Um, if you ask for a grant, you have to park wildlife, they will not pay for any of that non-native. They will only pay for native. Yeah. Also.
That's what I, you've got to see that, right? There's, there's a whole thing. But, I mean, that might be just in class. They're throwing that, which is really not a way to be, in this case. Yes. Uh, who would have asked? And, you know, we have that, that's it. You know, more taxes are at least.
Right? Yeah, you can, um, you know, if, if it's. So, you know, if, if what we want to do, you can say that any new. Develops, any new improvements would include, uh, at least, you know, this percentage of native plants. Uh, no invasive plants. So you wouldn't be planting something like, um, bee grass. Which you would have planted. Yeah, and you have a little bit of that starting in your park. So, but it's people who are now.
There's someone that's growing in now. In the city, just in the birth, birth equal buried that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
It's that, so.
Different topic. And I just wanted it for the record, I didn't want to say, but I was very surprised and a little bit. I'm saying like a little bit too harsh, but, um, taken back a little bit by the county. By needing the law store for their property and not even, not even notified. In the first place. And I was really not happy with the way they did that. You know, to say that to all that counts.
Yeah. Um, Pat, if you want to know a little bit, just about the inside out, indoor, outdoor. You know, we didn't, we talked about the outdoor, but there are opportunities, um, for a little bit of indoor. Um, if we wanted to make a rec room inside or like that, you want to touch a little bit of, of launch?
Talk a little bit about, um, about the whole grants that. Wildlife does. Uh, in fact, in your Park Master Plan, it will have a list of some funding opportunities that we can. So, um, Texas Parks Wildlife is a big, um, part of one for, for local art. Um, their outdoor grant, there are outdoor local park grants. You can apply for up to three quarters of a million dollars. Now, if you have one match, so you have to have seven hundred and fifty thousand if you want to set up. Uh, they also have a indoor grant that Benny was talking about, and that helps you a million dollars. But again, that's a one-to-one match. So if you want a million dollars, you have a million dollars. Now, they give you three years to, to build whatever it is. So, you know, you might be able to. To do that incrementally, uh, which is a little more doable. Uh. They also have, uh, for instance, a trail strength. And you can get up to three hundred thousand dollars for the trail. The kicker there is to get three hundred thousand, you only have to have a seventy-five thousand dollar. So that, that's pretty valid. And, um. Man, we need in time services. You know, the city can build the trail. And you can use with grant to buy. Um, so, you know, there are a lot of different, a lot of different options.
Are there one-to-ones in time about?
Yes. Well. Yeah, we've got the weapons and equipment. And the equipment, um, uh, the standard rates for using the equipment is high for hours. So you can, you can.
What about?
The, you can't use the value of property that is already dedicated.
Already developed?
Yeah.
Correct. What if we got property that's not doing any?
If you've got, if you've got property that is not dedicated parkland. And on the library, as an example, you're willing to dedicate this parkland, you can use that value. Uh, or if you've got someone is donating a piece of property. Uh, or it's within your usage price for a piece of property. You can use that value or that price reduction.
As much.
So.
Did you mention, what about properties that you just acquired? Compared with, uh, and then we're then looking purpose.
That's a good question. And you want to lock it in, but you know you're going to build a park there and you want to write a grant for it. Um, you buy the property and within a year you have to write a grant out. But you can get what they call a waiver of retro, retroactivity, which means the value that you put into that property, the, the price you pay for that property. Can be used as match for one year. Yeah. So.
And if some donate property.
Then value that.
Very, it's a market buying of.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So.
Right, you can be all of them just.
Been eyeing something for a while. And this is the first time you heard that, and you're saying we appreciate the knowledge.
Um, there are, uh, valuation scrubst in Texas, the gift of parks. Um, and one of the things I hope people is, don't just rent your building as a park. Don't just go after a, a grant for a park. Because what you're doing is you're giving people a chance to exercise. To, you know, feel a lot healthier. Uh.
You're giving them what we've given people here. You're giving them a place that they're in now. You've given them a, a center.
Exactly. So.
Very important.
And those are all things you can get grants for, not just to build a park, but to, to build a healthy community, to, to build habitats. So, um, yeah, there is, there's a lot that, that people have to stop there.
This, uh, first plan. Um. I'm sure it's already, uh, taking me to account. Uh, connectivity with other regional plant operations, all of that, the Adeline Trail. Uh, dedicated kayak routes along the Texas coast. I know that's a good priority. The, we are engaging with the real best kayak. Our Texas coast, um, and the bicycle plans connectivity throughout the county and other region. Their perfect location off the pathways to the, to the coast, the, or the center. Up, 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 Lizville area and on to, uh, Los Presmos and follow up the battlefield. Um, is this being integrated into the, the Park's plan? And how are our vision for the next five to ten years to go? Dull tail, fit in with those, those larger regional issues?
Really glad you asked that because I am on the committee for the current therapist. So, yeah. So, yeah, in fact, this is ten, don't be deep today. So, um, yes, the answer is definite. Um, alternative transportation plays a big part of that. Um, uh, connectivity to other, other recreational facilities, um, park trails. Um, the kayaking, um, the kayaking, I mean, could, could develop connectivity between. Uh, Laguna Vista and, you know, Portisro, as our tour will come. A little far. Um, and. Blow my own horn to, then I got the. No. Um, and, uh, the, that's still stuff, you know? I have a post. Not specific. Um, so, yeah, the buses, bus stop. About that, that's all. And that all plays a big role, not only to your planning. Um, but also grant application. Um.
Was our head rats for, uh, like you're saying about the traffic agent, but for, um, huts for them? Like, so like we have a stop in front of like the fire station, but there, but there's no hut, there's no, there's no like physical shed or object.
But now.
Uh, the weather shield for the, the boats and neither over there with that is something that considered.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, what is it called, Grant? By law, and. Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, um, yeah, that's true. And if you have that in your.
It's important because I remember when we had credit for sidewalks, well done. Um, we did like the foot traffic, like how people walk and then we said, well, how many cars goodbye? It was a bunch of doubt he submitted and it wasn't enough to get that specific grant for the sidewalks. So I'm sure with you, it's possible. For instance, you know, and it's not completely safe to go across the highway, but at least with. You know, the sidewalks and then we have a lot of drivers that go from, uh, the law courts all the way down this way, a lot of walkers and drivers. There's no path. Along the law courts there. I mean, they've made her a little path, but with something nice and safe, you know, that, that you better.
Yeah. Yeah.
In regards to these activities. Um. I know like there's plans passed from the battlefield, they have to leave. The big area behind our airport center. And those kind of things. If we were to put a park. On the west side of the product stack. Was connected, it'd be, it'd be available. If you think to get into those areas. Consider that. You know, to be, to be part of that bike plan that are here.
That's a, because one of the things we talked about in meeting, uh, this afternoon, this morning. For the, for us, was that they just got two and a half million dollars to plan the twenty eighth, or twenty mile trail through the way you're going. So, yeah.
Cause I, I, I know there's been some problems trying to get that connected into the airport center. Right? And so maybe it's a, it's a, it's a, or it might not. Difficult.
Um, actually, uh, the Fish and Wildlife Service is working for this.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, your, uh, one of your, uh, I guess the manager there, you know, uh, is. Was in a meeting and he's very excited. So, yeah, that would be a problem. And this is a, we're looking towards that. Um, they, they just got the planning grant. Uh, now they're going to have to do the planning. You need to be in on that planning.
Yeah.
So, absolutely.
And there we are.
Um. Um, I agree with you that there's definitely need on the busy boats to get it, but you also need to keep in mind the more concrete. The harder it is out there to get the flat water. Um, the more concrete, the less. That's just. My.
You can go.
I was thinking about the kind of duty and, I mean, kind of. What you bring that up to in, in terms of, uh, for example, you have Ivy one hundred. Uh, and you have that, that state. That it's state highways and patterns. Uh, how do you, for example, create pathway here? For. Right? Walk. After. Here. From the. Follow-up with a full country. How is it done with that highway that you can aside, is the state city, the whole thing can do this?
Uh, the Parrot Trail was actually marking with this thing. Uh, and you've got those wide shoulders on Highway one hundred, and those are actually counted in the Parrot Trail. Parrot Trail is a network of four hundred and eighty miles of trail, and that includes, uh, Highway one hundred, so you're right here on.
But they consider the current highway part of it?
Yes.
So there's not a little extension, and I know, because they went the country, but a little.
But it also can be just like the walking trails.
Exactly that.
It doesn't necessarily have to be concrete, considering the issues that we can have with flooding, but it also seems more sustainable with our area.
They know what they did between Los Redones and the, and Follow-up though, but they put that. Yeah, and that's what I kind of, it's, it's something I vision.
Well, and, um, something else. The city of Torrance Bell got the, the rail spring, um, from Jersey Park and Alamo, and put that sidewalk in between, uh, I think, on this, this road from high school to, um, at least. And that's, yeah, yeah, it's good, that's, uh, J. Paul Trail. So, yeah, all of that, all of that put together, and you guys are in a perfect location, I mean, the eye of the storm is right here, this is where people want to be. Uh, and you're right there, and the Parrot Trails, um, it includes hiking and biking trails, some of those are on those ways. Uh, it includes destination, and you have a beautiful, and poor people that are going along, you've got a bike repair station right here in the off park, you've got a bike repair station over at the library. So if people need it, and they're, they're going along, going along, they're biking along Highway one hundred. They know, whoever had a. They know that they can stop here, and then of course they can, you know, take the line, or, you know, whatever they want to spend their life.
I, I, this is my vision, the shoulders on the highway. I wish there was something other, or more. Uh, than, than that, just the goal.
Currently, that's what we've got, eventually. For that.
Is there times of. Is there a plan, or is there something we could do, working with the state to help some kind of secure rail, as we have. For the sort of, the equal tourism center, being there and all, and for those to come. And more development coming, I think that might be something, I don't know if it's our responsibility, it's somebody.
And, yeah, it would be a good time to work with tech dot, work with the, uh, the MPO, the, the regional MPO. To work with Parrot Trail, because, uh, Parrot Trails, the regional MPO, um, they have some momentum. With that. Uh, so that's, that's where I would suggest we go, uh, and that could be. That could be, I mean, I, I'm not saying that that could be in the parks master plan, but perhaps. You know, to add connectivity, um, and that can be an example of connectivity that we want to eventually provide.
So, yeah, I just, I just think this is the other side of one hundred. Something will happen with it, there will be development going on. We still all land there, so if we have the, we're just talking about it now. Keep it in mind.
Well, and I think a lot of, um, uh, the people in the meeting this morning, uh, for the Parrot Trails, uh, one of them. Is the hike and bike person for the R G U. And, you know, she's fantastic, and she's, she's really very capable about this, and she. Used to be the director of the, of the Parrot. So he's very familiar with what this area. Would, would be found. And if you want to put it in your, your park master plan, and, and all that input, put that in there, and, um, and have that in your parks master plan as, as a goal. To have that connectivity, uh, that will, that will promote the visa.
Thank you so much, I'm a bit bored, uh, continuing conversations on the, you know, making our master plan, the parks, so much.
Well, I think so. If you have, you know, you'll spring to your car, and email, and.
If either night is a recession, they could propose that, or if it's open being that, and I'll grab some discovery, or we'd go in any matter, listen, um, and that's the same decision, by whatever point. Upper, middle, count of turning, and litigation, five-five one point zero seven three, celebration regarding the property. Five-five one point zero six, four deliberations during personnel matters. Five-five one point zero eight seven, liberation regarding economic development, negotiations. We're most made by making memories, well, we'll go to thirty seconds, second by.
Some silver color?
Yes.
Some silver, well. Pretty good answers, yeah, correct.